We five fifteen, I like to call the April twenty seventh planning commission meeting to order. And for the pledge allegiance.
A diligence to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God. Universal liberty and justice.
I could make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
Jeff.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Suzie, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Review for approval of the April sixth, two thousand twenty-three special planning commission meeting. Meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Suzie, seconded by Donna. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Had you taken with five and six?
Yep. Five and six go together, and this all is due on the future SCS development lot. But to give you a little background of what is going on here. This was the CSM we created for their original project, their phase one that they were gonna do that ended up not coming to fruition, because the market changed, so they came up with a second plan. So we need to make some modifications on this original CSM that we did to accommodate their new plan. So on this CSM, you can see there was a proposed utility easement here at this location. There was a proposed public trail easement here for the existing trail that's there. And then there's a ten-foot underground sewer easement existing for the current sewer that's there today. So in your packet, you have a couple of documents. The first document is to remove the proposed twenty-five-foot trail easement and the proposed twenty-five-foot public utility easement that's on the current CSM. So that's one step. And actually, it was kind of out of order, but I'll jump down here. Then this release of utility easement rights actually removes the easement for the existing underground sanitary sewer easement that's there, that's this one right here. That's what this document would take care of. And then we're gonna add two new easements on the property. The first would be for the new sanitary sewer that we need to relocate to accommodate the new footprint. So you can kind of see that this is the location where this new easement would go for the sanitary sewer. I think the water's in here too somewhere. Here's the trail that's gonna be covering the existing trail that's there. Now I'll get to that, I'll come back to that in a second. Should be something with the water in here too. Thought it was down. Actually, the water's in the right of way, right?
It was down farther.
Where was it in? Into your sewer. That's the trail. And there's there.
Yeah.
Got it. So the water main is gonna be relocated really close to the right of way, right here. Want to go back to the trail. Reason why we shortened the narrowed up the trail he's been, it was twenty-five, and we're going down to fifteen. Swiderski's original plan was to put new buildings, eight new buildings on the site. And then there was, this was a preliminary design, but originally their design was to come out with a driveway into that Wyman Street roadway. That plan has changed with their new site plan. The new plan is not to come out onto Wyman anymore. The new plan is to come out Smith and then come out on Wolf River Avenue and not come out of Wyman. So by the city changing this to be a fifteen-foot easement, we're not going into the street anymore. Currently, this property, the, the road is not really public right of way. The road today is half-owned, back in the day, they abandoned it or vacated it. And currently, half the road is owned by Hillker. The other half is owned by the city. So hypothetically, we would have to go through a process and council, but sorry, I'm flipping around. If we make this fifteen-foot, which that's all we need for the trail, we allow the city to have the ability, if we want, and if Hillker wants, that we could sell or vacate this thirty-foot strip and give both sides of, they already own this site. We could hypothetically give or sell to Hillker this site too, so it'd be a hundred percent their roadway, their driveway. Less property for the city to maintain. It's pretty much only used for their semis and such. Not saying we have to do it, but that gives us the option to do that if we would like. We could give them this strip right here, and then they would have the roadway, and then the trail would be in our new fifteen-foot easement. Does that make sense? So again, those two agenda items are to bring up the easement, get rid of the old stuff, put the new easements in here, which gives us the option, if we want. Again, we'll talk about that at different meetings, probably different committees, whether we wanna actually go through with that, but it gives us the option to. Any questions?
Much of that, do we still plow the, the street by Hillker?
We own half of it today, so I'm sure we're going through it and coming back, so I'm, yeah. So. Let's bring that up so you guys can see what that looks like. Yeah, so it's, it's narrow, it's only because they got parking in here right now. It's only a little over thirty feet right now of roadway per se. And the only reason it's being used is right now for their semi is to gain the access in the back of the, the building. So obviously, if we give it to them, then we have less maintenance on that stretch of road. You know, it would become a private drive for the most part.
That's something we would wanna keep just for the access to get, to get back to the trail, just, just in case.
We would have that discussed. This opens up the door to allow us to do it, doesn't mean we have to. We would keep easement rights in here, because there's some utilities underneath here. So we would keep, create, make sure the easements are there, if not, create them to make sure we have utility easement rights to get through here. So, and hypothetically, we could maybe throw it together in easement to give us access to get back to the trail, if we want to, for trail access.
Does that Smith Street, does that go all the way out then? Or into that area where the apartment building is going to be built, or, or what, what's there now? I mean.
I've highlighted the right of ways, so Smith Street, this.
So Smith Street does go all the way through there, okay?
Right of way goes to the river.
Okay, okay.
There's actually a little alley back here that's in the right of way as well, behind John's Bar.
Yeah. I just didn't realize there was a road or, there's a right of way, not a road, yeah.
Yep, and there's utilities that go underneath here.
Okay.
I think there's fiber optic and maybe something else that goes underneath the river in that location, but there's.
Water main.
I wouldn't suggest us giving this up, because there's a lot of stuff going on in here. Now, this was probably gonna stay right away. And then we retain that little strip, because that was purchased through stewardship funds. So in our DNR agreement with obtaining that DNR grant, we can't give that up, we can't sell it. It's gotta stay in the public domain as public recreation. This is, that's the lot we're actually looking at selling to Swiderski, and then putting that new sanitary sewer easement here. And then the new water easement right along the road.
Is there any utilities in that lot between Swiderski project and the John's Bar that, lot there? Is there any utilities there?
Jay, do you know if there's any water there?
Ah, there is water on, on Smith Street, there's water main.
Not gonna say this is perfect, but green is sanitary, and so, yeah, there might be some sanitary back there. Orange is storm. And I don't know if, this isn't Jay's layer, so I don't know if this is perfect or not, but then this stuff would be the water.
Yep. Yeah.
Cross river there. And I, I would, when I look at something like this, this is a good starting point, but I would wanna field verify all this stuff, make sure that this is actually true.
Why would we only have a fifteen-foot wide? Why do we need that trail easement there when we have access in several other ways? And then why would we limit ourselves to fifteen feet when we own half of the street? Why would we just keep that all as a trail easement?
If we would sell this lot to Hillker hypothetically. We're selling this lot to Swiderski, so we wanna keep a trail easement, because the trail is actually gonna be on their property.
Has Hillker shown any interest in that strip of the road?
I met with them two weeks ago and kind of put the bug in their ear, and he just kind of would. So I don't think he was expecting me to kind of propose that, so. But I did mention to him that that's a possibility, chew on it and see what you think, and down the road, we can talk about giving away a road.
So I think when you first started talking about that, you talked about giving that right of way, now we're gonna sell it, which I like better.
Um. If, if it's one less piece of property we're maintaining, less snowplow, less street maintenance, which is not something that we really need. We have to determine, if it's not something we really need, then.
I think he blows it now.
We've given most of those right of ways to go to the river, and that's basically where that goes, the people that own on both sides of it. We kind of spooked that up.
And actually, by law, when you vacate right of way, you have to give half of it to each property owner on both sides.
Yeah.
So technically, we're the property owner over here. If we officially vacate this, we're the property owner of this, so we're, we're getting it, but then, you know, do we give it to them, do we sell it? To be determined. I don't have a recommendation one way or another as of now.
How much of the trail do we have down by the river?
What do you mean?
How many feet from the, from the sacred river up to Swiderski's property?
Well, the, the blue would be Swiderski's property.
Okay.
So that's, and not saying that this is perfect, because it, you know, right here, it kind of looks like it goes over the top. It's probably more so like right here. Maps, the lines on the maps aren't perfect, they're close. But I know this corner is pretty darn close to the edge of the trail, right here. So there's not much room in between the trail and their property, at least on the east side. On the west side, there's obviously a little, little bit more.
How wide is that area that's that alley or that coal owned with Hillker? What is that, thirty, thirty-some feet, sixty?
Engineers are showing about thirty foot each side. So this strip right here is about thirty feet. Again, I'm not proposing that we do that at this point in time.
What's buried underneath there, anything? Is there any utilities or anything under that?
Jay, you got some water going through there too, don't you?
We have some electric facilities in there, all kind of along that walkway. There's a transformer at Hillker's, and it comes to a transformer over there, so we do have some underground electric facilities.
That's your transformer?
Yeah.
I think this blue is supposed to be generally the electric. I think. And then you guys would just be abandoning this purple water line.
Correct.
Because then the new water line's actually gonna be right along here. And then you're gonna abandon this one too, is that your plan?
Correct.
The roadway.
How much?
How much space is gonna be between that easement and what about the one that was built down here? Exists, could you pull that?
That one goes across the river.
Definitely, that's a river crossing.
Yeah.
I don't have how close it is, but I know their engineers took this and overlaid it.
We didn't want.
And it fits in their site plan.
I guess from my thought, that thirty foot right.
There's a hydrant.
Be nice to put some trees in there to buffer the area from the residential to the commercial on that side.
On the.
Put some pines in there or something, if you could do that.
The west side?
Yeah.
We put a bunch of there's a bunch of maple trees over there, there's a line of maple trees, and we're waiting for them to.
There is already.
Yep, we did that in anticipation of this, we did that eight years ago, seven years ago. Yep, there's a line of pines in there already. And or maple.
Maple trees, yeah.
They're the.
Eight of them.
They're the blazing, supposed to be the red blazing maples. Yeah, autumn blaze, yeah.
There's about six or eight trees, I think, along there or something.
Yep.
And then this water main was the salt.
Any other questions? Why is I ask you guys to consider both these things? The this will also typically the easements and stuff just get approved by the commission, however, since the city is the owner of that property right now, this will be going to council to have the council consider it as putting these easements in as the owner. So this is also gonna go to council as well, typically one, but since this is the city property, as the owners, the council is gonna bless this as well. Hope no other questions, the last consideration for approval of those two items individually, one at a time.
Looking for a motion to approve the affidavit for correction of CFM eight-one-three-three parcel three thirty-three twelve seventy-seven one eleven.
I'll make that motion.
Well, second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Jeremy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Huh? Ask for discussion.
Oh, is there any discussion on that? No discussion, I all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. And Ted, you got number six?
And we went through that, unless there's no other questions.
Okay, okay. I need a motion to approve the utility and trail easement for parcel thirty-three twelve seventy-seven one eleven.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jeremy, seconded by Donna, any discussion? No discussion, motion carried.
Over the vote.
I need a all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I get it.
I'll be abstaining from that vote.
Motion carried with one abstaining. Okay, Dave's gonna take number seven and number eight.
All right. So this is for the strip mall, we discussed at the April meeting. Do we have some updated drainage plans for that property? We, I say we, the proposal addresses the issue with the delivery vehicles that we talked about, including semis. They've got a dedicated space for those to get into the lot, and then two places they can maneuver to get out without creating any traffic backup, so. It's pretty similar to what we discussed at the April meeting. And the owners here tonight, if anybody has any questions on anything for the proposal.
I just have a cup, can you, can someone just kind of describe what we're looking at up here? I mean, I, I'm thinking it's the Rainbow Motel there, right? And.
That's next door, yes.
Okay, where though, on that map? I mean, I, I don't see how it's being placed.
Let me clean up, get rid of these utilities here.
Page twenty-one of thirty-one, that's a good one to chat.
So Rainbow Motel.
Okay.
And subway.
Yep.
And it's, yeah, on the rainbow side, there you go.
Got it.
So it makes an L shape coming off Shano and turns north here.
Got it.
Thirty-one, so the Rainbow Hotel's there on the bottom radiant corner.
I have a question, how many stores are gonna be in there?
There's seven, but we have one acre or, or, I think, two thirty-six.
Looks like they added some parking in the back of the original building, Chad, that we didn't see at the first proposal last month, which is a good thing.
Yeah, we, they did reconfigure the parking slightly to gain a few more spots and allow for the of delivery traffic to come in.
Will there be a back entryway then for that parking lot?
Negative, no.
Dave, whatever happened to that, where they would go, you would go to the travel plaza through there, is that gonna be eliminated?
I don't think they have an easement for that, and like I said, the owners here, I can have.
Was there something that was always allowed, or?
Yeah, we, we always got along, and I wanted the previous order of the travel plaza, I got a lot, new ones get along, so we still cut through. But our problem is people like to cut through and hang out back there, and that kicked out from the motel.
It just seems like a really tight space. Is it pass all the fire codes and everything like that to do this? You know, it just seems like to get vehicles in there, it's a really tight space. I'm not sure how wide the drive is, can you bring that up? Should be on one of the. I don't know, has the fire chief has looked at this yet?
I can do. But this was designed by engineers.
Yeah.
So.
I'm assuming it would be. There, there should be plenty of room.
So originally, that behind the building was a turnaround, and now they added the parking there, is that gonna inhibit them semis from turning there, or where? Where will they turn yet?
We have someone from the fire department here that can.
Yeah, they're gonna use the existing driveway.
Yep.
And there'll be no problem getting even our aerial in that parking lot off of Shano Street.
But my question was, the semis making deliveries in that in the back, that was just a gravel parking lot, now you put parking there? Are they still gonna be able to turn back there if there's vehicles parked there?
I don't think they're gonna go back there. That space by his cursor there is gonna be dedicated for delivery semis. And they can either go back, make that turn and go back out, or they can back out in front of the other building there and make their turn there to get out. Yeah, they, they specifically addressed that, because they, they don't want that problem either, that headache. Definitely not a space for you on somebody's back and hold on to the highway there.
No.
So I've checked everything against our zoning ordinance and what they're proposing meets our current zoning requirements, so. We're looking for approval to get started. They wanna break ground here in the next couple of weeks, so we're hoping to get this through committee. If that's their wish.
If it passes all the ordinances, I don't. If it passes everything that's been done by an engineer.
Then how could you stop it, right?
Right.
We're just making, we need a motion to approve this. Prove the site plan. I would make the motion.
I'll second it.
A motion married, made by Jamie, seconded by Suzie to approve the site plan for the strip mall. Any more discussion on it? No more discussion, I need a approval from the, or yes, folder, whatever, from the board.
Aye.
Aye.
This is bad.
First one, takes longer.
Any no votes? There is none, motions carried. Hey Dave, you got number eight?
Yep. I'm gonna have to give me. All right. So. Create a baseline, I went to, Manashas just recently adopted an ordinance to allow chickens. So I took their ordinance, made some tweaks to it, and this is just kind of a baseline to start some discussions of on whether or not we want to allow chickens in the city limits, so. As you see, there's number six chickens that's being, that's in their ordinance. We may wanna go up or down, assuming we wanna adopt something that would allow them. We would not allow roosters, and then there's some issues in there with upkeep. Making sure we don't have anything that's gonna violate our nuisance ordinance for odor or noise, so. Their ordinance kind of looks like they took a stab at kind of the same issues that we would have if we were to adopt this, so.
You said you tweaked it a little bit, what kind of things did you tweak?
I didn't change much of the code, I just took out Manashas.
Oh, okay.
Code ordinances, I put New London.
Okay.
In there, so, and then, you know, obviously, our chapter's different that it would be in, so I changed all that stuff, so. Except this is just kind of a base, just to kind of start a discussion.
I would like to see why we would put two family residents in this. I mean, I understand that the owner of the whatever duplex would have to give approval to one side, but it still would be chickens on one side and the other half or whatever would have to be okay, you know, with. I don't know if that is necessary for us to have that in our ordinance, if that's what we're gonna do to have an R two there, because to me, that's just asking for trouble. I mean, it's bad enough, you know, I, I think it's bad enough to have a neighbor that has it, and then to have right next door as far as a R two, so. I don't know, anyone else feel that way, or?
I know, and a lot of times duplexes share.
Right, a backyard or something.
Yeah, so.
I think the number is too many, I think it should be three or four, and I have chickens, so.
I don't think we should allow them at all. Because people ain't gonna take care of them, and chickens stink.
I was just gonna say, who monitors that proper conditions? Are you gonna be going out to all of these places and I'm like?
Because there isn't a health officer for.
Wow, I mean, that's just another issue.
I, I will say that we have got a dozen people probably over the last year that are wanting them. So that's the only reason we're even bringing this to the commission to discuss, so.
I don't think by passing it, we're gonna have like a thousand chickens on our own in London, but there's gonna be a few. You know, I mean, not just because, oh boy, we could have, everybody's gonna buy them.
Gee, you got chickens, what do you think? Um. My opinion is I don't think they really belong in the city, they do make noise, they do smell. You know, I have almost an acre of land and I have six, and I don't have enough land, I mean, I let them out all the time. And six chickens, you have to allow for a larger coop, so that was my concern, is you're gonna require people to build a larger piece, and you know, you can't fit a large coop in all the lots in New London. So I think that would be the big issue that I thought, I mean, I would, I think three or four, four residents, if they're really requesting it. And I, like I said, I think you're gonna probably see a dozen, I mean, not everybody's gonna get a chicken, but obviously, you're gonna get, you know, you're gonna have neighbors that don't agree. So I do agree with everyone saying that it could cause more issues than what you may want, I don't know.
Bob brought up a good point, some of the.
Suzie, you were saying duplexes, people have dogs, they might have three dogs on one side of the duplex, the other side doesn't. He just fencing that side of duplex, so I, I don't know if that's, you know.
I don't know, I don't know that we would have to differentiate between if a duplex has them or not, that would be up to the landlord.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I.
You know, I mean, and I, but I do see your point, too.
I mean, do we?
Duplex and the neighbor moved in with chickens.
Do we have anything currently that limits people from having chickens?
Yes, we do. The only place we allow them currently is in the ag district. So we'd either propose an R one and R two, or just R one. We definitely wouldn't want them on R three or four.
Well, if you don't want them on R three or four, I don't see why you'd have to have them on R two. You know, I mean, it, you're just, you have multiple or different people, it's not like one family is coming up with the consensus to have chickens. You got two families and I just, I mean, if you're not gonna have it at, you know, other apartments, I don't see why you would want to even go there, you know, with an R two.
One with the dog thing, you, you allow people to have three hundred pound dogs.
I understand, but that's just my opinion.
You know, like a four chickens, like, where is the line drawn there?
Dogs are usually housed inside predominantly.
Usually.
Usually.
From outside, right?
They do.
And dogs are much easier to pick up after than a chicken.
Yeah.
I think of New London as a rural community, a small town. This is an ordinance that they have in Manashe, and they're open to this. So I guess I, I would be comfortable adopting the same ordinance in New London as what Manashe would have. I mean, if they're, they're a bigger community than us, and people come to the small town for that rural feel and you know, cost of eggs were up to five bucks a dozen not too long ago, and you put eggs and cookies and everything else, it's, it's a pretty staple.
I agree, but we lower the amount of chickens first and see how that goes, and then if it's six chickens.
I would have.
Six chickens at one lot is a lot.
I sell homes all over the Fox Valley, Appleton has a chicken ordinance, Manashe has a chicken ordinance. I've never seen an issue with them, and it seems like the people that I've seen with the chicken coops, when you get into the three to four hundred thousand dollar homes, they tend not to have them. It's usually the lesser priced homes that, you know, they got more time to be around, they're younger families and that, they seem to enjoy that more. I would agree with Dave, maybe not do six, maybe do three or four. The issues with chickens are not exactly the same as dogs, dogs, when it rains out, their poo doesn't disappear, and when chickens, it rains out, it kind of just goes away. If there is some out there. You listen to the scanner in New London, or I'm on calls every day, every day, there's a complaint, I would swear about a dog in New London somewhere that's barking. And I, I just don't, I mean, I've got Wapaka Colony, I never hear anybody have any complaints about chickens unless somebody gets a rooster in there. With the duplex issue, I guess, you know, if you got a zero lot line or something, you got a fence between the two duplexes, you wouldn't want that chicken house up against the fence of dividing the two properties there. You'd want that, if you want those chickens to be farther away on a lot line or something like that, or I see you can't have them within twenty feet of a lot line, it might just make it difficult to have them at all.
Well, and they're.
Backs and stuff, I, I think it's a good idea, I don't see a problem with it, as far as I'm concerned, I think chickens are as much if not more therapeutic than what a dog is, you don't have to vaccinate them, they're not barking, they're not biting. They're easy. And like I said, you know, maybe, maybe like Dave said, start with, or whoever mentioned it, start with three. I, I don't know if I'd ever go to six, I think five might be a good number.
I think my biggest concern about the number is because I have them and I've had them for many years. If you let people in New London have six, they're gonna go to Fleet Farm and they're gonna buy a chicken coop. And that coop may say that they could have five birds in it, but that's not humane to those birds, if you understand the size of what they're building and those animals living in it, that, that coop is made for those birds to roost there. They're supposed to free range all day, they're not supposed to be confined to a three foot by five foot chicken coop. So that's the reason I would like to limit the, the, the number.
Does the, does the chicken coop size we're proposing here, is that adequate?
Yeah, it is to the bird, but there's still a time when you're gonna want to let them out.
Oh.
I mean, I have a coop that's big enough for six chickens, it's big enough for fifteen or twenty, but they're let out every day so they can walk around. I mean, and you're not gonna have that in town, that's where you're gonna be limiting them, so that's my concern over the coop size. Is you're gonna have them build that coop, and then you're gonna concentrate the smell, because they're gonna be defecating in that coop, and then it's gonna build up. And then you have Suzie's concerns with, you know, are people gonna maintain them?
I guess what I would like to see, we're, we're talking about the permit required under D, it says, any person other than the recorded title owner looking to permit chickens shall first provide written consent of the property owner with the zoning review application. I guess I would like to see that written consent be on a form that explains to the property owner that they are gonna be responsible if their tenants are not following these guidelines. So before they would then give permission to it for a tenant to put in a coop and have chickens, they would be full aware that, you know, because renters can just up and leave.
This ordinance doesn't allow them to have them if they're tenant. It needs to be a single, so are you thinking like?
Well, it says R two, family residence, so an R two would be like a duplex that is owned and one, you know, it's, it's a rental.
Yes.
So that's what I'm looking at, saying that, you know, we need to have, make sure that the property owner, if they're giving permission for somebody else who's residing in their home, to have those chicken coops, there needs to be some kind of a.
Think that's in your, yeah.
Well, it says that they must provide written consent, but it doesn't say, I mean, that's a note from mom.
Okay.
I want to see that written consent to be a little bit more of an understanding of the property owner that they are responsible, should their tenant up and take off and leave those chickens and whatever.
And I don't know if we want to overly regulate it, there talks about a yearly.
So if we pass the ordinance, can the property owner prohibit the renter from having them?
Yes, a property owner could prevent.
On the ordinance, yeah.
Yes.
Maybe we should just write it that way, and if they, if it's a rental property, they can't.
Make it up to the property owner.
Yeah, they're usually not that permanent anyway, so why would they want to get into this and then two years have to get out?
We come up with a form, I'm sure.
One note on here, Dave, about the sale of baby chicks, you know, we don't have to worry about that since we can have, can have roosters anyway.
Right.
Just wanted to point that out.
I agree with Tim, though, if, if Appleton or Manashe have it, we, we almost have to do something, but maybe lower the number a little bit.
And there's obviously people that want to have them in our community, and I think we have to be receptive to what the community wants.
I believe there's several communities not too far from here that are adopting chicken ordinances, I, I can think of two or three up here, but I think it's kind of the trend. Yeah.
I don't know if this is feasible, but would it be by a case by case basis?
I don't know if we can do it that way, we, we can limit it, you know, to say R one, if that's what we decide, we don't want to hassle with the duplexes, I could get that, so even if the neighbor said, well, I, I don't have a problem with it, they move out next month and the new tenants move in and so that might be something you might want to look at on the duplexes.
One thing I found interesting, I read through this and like, what is this all about? And I found this on several other ordinances, evidently, Wisconsin State statute requires you to register your location with the state.
Yeah.
If you have chickens.
Yeah.
It's a special number that they livestock promise law.
Yeah.
So yeah, you need to permit from them, too.
Yeah.
So they'll have to jump through a few hoops.
You can just go online, I saw, and coop is free, but yeah, you gotta do it.
Because of a disease outbreak is they need to know where those animals are, if they have to destroy the flock in the city in New London, that's what they want to know, that, that's when the state steps in, that's not our issue.
I, I'm willing to call a couple of the other municipalities that are, have these ordinances and just see if, if they are running up against problems, I, I can't see it being a big problem, but I, I guess I don't know.
Move out and leave their chickens.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised what people leave when they, when they move out.
I wouldn't.
I'll need to get a chicken sheriff badge.
Hey. We gotta buy you, Jack. Gotta buy you, Jack.
We could see more fences coming up, you know, people would be wanting to put fences up.
So I think there's some language in here about having a small run, I don't, you know, since they have to be so far off the property line, we're gonna have to limit a little bit. You know, give them a little bit of run, but I even think there's some language in here on the size of that to look at, like I said, we can tweak this if we think that's a direction we want to go to come up with something, we can come up with our own language, we don't have to follow theirs necessarily.
We also have given this to the city attorney, and we have not gotten comment back from him yet either, so he might have a tweak coming as well, just forewarn.
This will just be an initial stage, we're not gonna really adopt nothing tonight. Just open discussion and get it out there.
Yeah, we'll put it on next.
Basically, what are your concerns?
Agenda.
We're hearing the number of chickens, we're hearing about the coop, we're hearing about the R two. Any other, from what you see, any other concerns we gotta look into?
So I'll start keeping notes on some of the issues that we think.
Why, why the twenty feet away, I guess, I don't understand.
Smell. I've had chickens too, and if you, if you don't take care of them.
That smell's gonna carry more than twenty feet.
I think horses, even they require, I, I want to say it's ten between neighboring properties, so I think, I think it's to limit the smell.
And they do make some, some noise.
Constant.
Sixty foot wide lot. Twenty feet. We don't center your back property.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure there's a few lots where we might be up against that, might have to have to be in the center of the lot and no closer, you know, might have to, got a forty foot lot, I guess.
This is just twenty feet from the neighboring house, right? This is, you can go three feet from the property line, right?
Correct.
Yeah. As, as what I'm seeing.
Assuming there's not a house, yeah, right. I guess closest should be six foot, but some, some of the older ordinances, some of the houses are right up on the property line, if it looks so. That, that we'd probably have to do case by case, they'd have to come up with a site plan, show me where the, it's gonna be located, and then we'd have to check to see if the numbers match up on our ordinance.
Be no different than putting up a fence or something like that, they'd do the same thing.
So, yeah, that, that, what, have you determined what the fees are to get a permit to do something like this, or?
This was just kind of a baseline to even discuss, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, if the planning commission was thinking we wanted to go.
We require permits.
Yeah.
For more ridiculous ideas than what this is, so.
Yeah, I don't want to get it too heavily regulated and help it.
Just give it, because. On-site inspection and give your blessing and say, yep, you meet it.
Yep.
Then there's regulations that if there's a complaint.
Right.
Then we go in, alright.
And they'll probably, probably sign something, given us, you know, permission, obviously, we're gonna access the lot if we got a noise, not a noise complaint, but a odor that we're gonna have, be able to have access to that space to make sure there, that talks about watering them and feeding them.
Make sure the number of chickens stays to the limit.
Yeah, no, I think they talked about not harvesting them there either, quit laying eggs, so, yeah.
Why do you not, in the ordinances, have you talked to anybody, why do they not allow the sale of those eggs?
That was just in their ordinance, so I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know why you couldn't. Honestly, who cares?
Yeah.
Three eggs a day. They don't seldom lay two a day, but, I mean, they do once in a while, but it's only talking, you know, less than two dozen eggs a week, so why you couldn't sell your neighbor a half a dozen eggs or something, I don't see it being an issue. Maybe if he had six.
Then you're gonna promote people to have more chickens, though.
Yeah, then you're gonna promote having plenty chickens in the backyard.
As soon as they sell them, then they're not gonna have them for themselves, then they're gonna get more.
Cheaper. Well, I wouldn't say that.
Just enjoy the eggs yourself.
So I'll put it on the agenda for next month, that's okay. Alright. Um. I under discuss upcoming agenda items, I don't have anything there, but there is a zoning board of adjustment and appeals training up in Wapaka County at the courthouse. And I think it's, what day was that, you just second here and find it. May third in Wapaka. They're talking about board of adjustment and appeals, and it's kind of just some zoning training for the planning commissioner, planning training. There is money in my budget for the zoning administrator, it's twenty dollars for the class, but we have money in the uh, in my budget to pay for that, so after the meeting, if anybody's interested in going to that, we'll get you signed up. We have to sign up tomorrow.
What time, the time of day?
One to five o'clock, Wednesday, May third, at the Wapaka County Courthouse. So if anybody's interested, come see me after the meeting, and I'll get a list together and we'll get you signed up and registered, and if you want to go.
We have a meeting that night, we have a finance meeting that night. By fifteen, so.
I was thinking about going, and if I go, then I would cut out early, so if anybody else would go, then once come to finance.
Or leave the training early to come back.
Yeah, probably leave by quarter after four, get here by quarter five, get ready for finance committee, so.
Might be helpful for some folks, so just if you're interested, come see me after the meeting, we'll get you signed up. And that's all I have, the next scheduled date is May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, unless we, for some reason that doesn't work. That sound good for everybody, the twenty-third?
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, so you know, there's nothing else.
I'll send them.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Donna, seconded by Suzie, all in favor, signal by, by, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.